We're late.
All right, welcome everybody to the Select Board meeting, Monday, March 4th. It is now 6:36 and we will open the meeting as per usual with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll call the chairman of the chair, Select Board.
Marlo Harris.
Normie Blake.
And that will move us on to announcements, a couple of quick ones. First off, the roads are posted for wait limits and so that is in effect due to mud season. Please make sure that if you have a problem with that or you need an exception for some particular reason, contact the road agent before expecting that. Property inventory forms have now been mailed out and you should receive them shortly. As always, they are due on April 15th. Town reports are now available. You can find them digitally on the website tomorrow as well as printed copies in the office. As noted in there, of course, we also have town elections on Tuesday, March 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then town meeting the following Saturday, March 16th at 10:00 a.m. Do we have further announcements?
I was just going to add that ballot question three is an abbreviated form of the actual agreement for the new amended agreement. Full copies of the agreement will be available at voting and also it's on the web and we also have it at the office.
Perfect. Any other announcements?
Yes, my Webster grapevine for March will be out in a couple of days.
Awesome. We look forward to a March special edition grapevine. Does this mean you're back in the business or is this a wannabe?
Probably back in the business.
Well, everybody will be happy to hear that. Any other announcements? All right, that moves us on to our first appointment, so come on down gentlemen, department head time.
Mine's short and sweet. So, as in our last financial report on the 29th of February, which used $52,303.87 of our projected 2024 budget. It was a fairly quiet month, which I'm happy about. We had 35 motor vehicles stopped, three summonses, $403 in fines and only one arrest, which was good. Forty-three calls for service and a typical list. Civil matters, department information received, found property, motor vehicle complaints, motor vehicle accidents, residential burglary alarms, road hazards, plenty of those from the wind. Suspicious activity reported, sex offender registration, subpoena services, suspicious vehicles, assist to the fire and EMS.
Thank you.
Assist to other agencies, assist citizens and animal complaints. We're doing background on a female, full-time certified officer right now that wants to come to work part-time, so I would really be happy on that side. We'll have our first female.
We, I remember previously we had a lead on a full-time. Is that still maybe?
It is. He's committed right now and it may be a couple of months before he can really go for it. So, that's okay with us.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions, comments?
No.
All right.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
So, we'll start with the roads. The roads. I posted in the dirt roads aren't, it's not my favorite time of year. I went to help out a nice lady this morning and I said, you know, she turns up her road. If I put two loads of dirt down there, that will make that real happy. Well, six, seven loads later, I was in, I was in worse shape than when I started. And was it any better when you're at home tonight?
I told him he could chase me down the road, catch me speeding down Colorado, go ahead.
I do have a lot of phone calls that people called, New London Drive, Rumpford Drive, Bashin Hollow, Garrish. But where the frost has let out of the ground and tomorrow with the rain.
It's gonna.
It's gonna really help and yeah, it's not my favorite time of year and we're doing the best we can without just going stupid with dumping dirt. So, um, talked to another road agent there this morning and he just said that sometimes people have to have patience.
Yeah, and it is, you know, it is interesting each year where a road acts different. Really because, yeah, because you think, oh, that's always been a bad spot. Well, that's not so bad. This is worse. Over here, it is interesting.
And, you know, what was it, March 27th, it was 57 degrees. We got an inch of rain. It should have been 10 degrees and we should have got two feet of snow.
That's right.
And then yesterday it was almost 60.
60 degrees.
And almost another inch of rain. And it's a, I've never, it's a different type of winter.
Yes.
And, um, everybody says, when can I do this and when can I do that? And I, I just said, if I had the crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be the road agent here in the town. And a lot of people have been great. There has been some people that have been demanding, but you can't go any faster and there's been a lot of people that really understand because they, they do. So, so thanks to them and.
It'll be over before you know it.
It will be. They'll be, when they're, when they're batting the black lies that we forgot all about me in the back road.
That's a fact.
I know Crossman Bridge has one big hole up by you, I think. Not Crossman Bridge, Crossman Road. Yeah, just hanging into it in the hole.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, in that, I, yeah, I went to my coal patch pile the other day and that's so hard you can't, it's just.
That was, that's another weird thing is when digging into any material that's been processed and sitting in the pile, it's like, it's like, it's like a rock.
We took the loader to the pit, uh, the town, the dump.
Yeah.
Last week, I took it down and then I sent Emory and Russell down with the trucks and the loader. And they gave up in the three-quarter rock and then the other pile that's beside of it, the ledge pack, knit pack, I guess they call it. And then they did finally get into the stuff that we crushed after moving stuff. And I mean, the frost was three feet deep.
Way more than in the ground. It's so weird.
And then.
Every pit's having that problem.
Coming out of, coming out of the pit, going down the dump road to the tar, well, by the time, yeah, then we ended up fixing that at the end of the day, so.
It was a win-win-win-lose. I don't know if there was much win. No, but that is true.
Emory just said that I'm gonna, I'm gonna break the, I'm gonna break, break something on the loader. It's just, it's froze.
We didn't haul stuff out of our pit because we couldn't move it.
No.
We go somewhere else and even Haddock and Crushdell was having a hard time.
Yeah. Um, the other, the other day when I was working out on Rumpford Drive, I was getting the stuff from down of Osklen and you'd spread a load, well, tailgate a load because you can't just go in. All the chunks and all you did was thought that, you know, the gate's open this wide and your body's up and it's, yeah. You know, it's, it's a hard time of year to do anything. So, um, if the folks just bear with me a little bit longer, we'll get through it and I just, I mean, the six tunnel limit. I did let some folks go down on New London Drive. They had a backup with Beth Setmick in the leach field, so that was a hazard, so we went and took care of that. But somebody that needs a dumpster, this, that, you can wait a little bit because if you let one, there's no, you gotta let everybody and then you might as well not post the road. So, it's, it's just a part of the job that you have to deal with. It's not the most friendly, because you don't want to say no to people, but you have a job to do. So, I'm good with that. So, the firehouse, been busy. Forty calls so far this year. It all started there a couple of weeks ago on a Wednesday. Um, we got called second alarm building fire to Barton Corner Road off in Hatfield and Hawtikin. Second alarm, the wind was blowing so bad that day, I mean, they didn't even have a prayer and they, they hadn't, they didn't have a fighting chance because the wind just, it just took it from one end to the other. So, we went with the crew. I left my crew at the scene and then I went back to Keys of Pond, to the pump site and filled tankers with the engine. And then Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening, I guess, we got called to Dunbarton for their third alarm, well, it was third alarm when we went with a pumper and a tanker. Myself and Emory took the tanker and, and four folks took the engine. The engine ended up filling tankers at the pump site. We hauled water an hour into that, you know, maybe two hours into that fire. Warner got toned out for fully involved building fire. So, they called, they were scratching for, they were reverting trucks, Loudon and Pembroke and they all came up the interstate to that and so they called us for another engine. We got that other engine out with a crew of five, maybe six, to go to Warner. And at that time, I knew that we had no, all our helpers everywhere and our trucks weren't there, so we called Franklin to send over a cover truck. So, they came over and stayed at our station and so we got back. I think I got back around 11:30 from Dunbarton. Then on the way back, Engine Three got dismissed from Dunbarton and they were coming home on Jewett Road. They got, Dunbarton got toned for an overdose, unresponsive person. And Engine Three was right by the address. I had just gone by it. So, they turned around because we had a paramedic and an EMT on the engine. So, they worked the code with, well, they were there for us because they were right there. And so, Daring was covering Dunbarton, so their engine came and then the Dunbarton, well, either the Bow or the Dunbarton ambulance came as the ambulance. And, um, it wasn't a good outcome at the very end for the, for the person, but our crew was there and worked close with the others and, um, so they got back around, whoa, 12:31 o'clock. So, then we dismissed Franklin. And then Rob and the crew from Warner got back around 2:00 in the morning. Then we had a propane leak on Robey Road that a passerby called in at 164 Robey Road for strong odor of gas in the area. So, Jake lives on that end of town. He went to the scene. I grabbed the engine with Lieutenant Lorden and we went door to door and we found a thousand gallon propane tank. That was the line between the tank and the house must have ruptured. And the, it was just whistling. So, we got the tank shut off, checked the area and notified the landowner. I had his telephone number. He was in Massachusetts, so told us where the key was. So, we went in and did a search of the house to make sure that wasn't all propane and stuff in there and, um, things, because when we got, when we found the tank, the lights were on in the house and the music and nobody would come to the door, so we didn't know what was going on in there. So, um, we were able and Kevin, your other officer, he was there working with us, checking door, going door to door with us and one lady didn't come to the door. Locked on the door, but she did call the police, which was fine.
She didn't know what it was.
Yeah. So, um, but Kevin got right back to that, her and let her know what we were doing and stuff, so. Friday night, we had a medical call and they called for DART. So, we landed them in the ball field. So, that was, everybody was always, everybody was wondering what was going on and stuff and that was the. So, things have been busy.
Do you think?
Jeez, I guess.
And the, and the turnouts have been great. Everybody's been great at the firehouse and doing all they can to give their time when they have it to give. And the surrounding towns around us were, were pretty fortunate.
Yeah.
To have the neighbors that we have that help us and we help them and the capital area mutual aid is just, it, it just works.
It's surely tested this month.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
So, and everybody that I've talked to is gearing up for quite a brush fire season because of, everything's been opened all winter. The snow hasn't been laying on the wood, the dead wood and the brush and soaking up the, you know, so, in the snow, when the snow melts, we're not going to have a snow melt. So, they don't have that to look forward to. So, um, the forestry side of it is gearing up for a busy, a busy season in the spring, so, um.
Weird they like, it's kind of dry now. Not after this week, but.
No, but it is. I mean, there's been open, there's been fields that have been opened all went along. I mean, you just look up to Aunt Pat's and Auntie G's up on the hill there and it's just, it's just been. So, yeah.
May I bring up something that has nothing to do with the fire department?
And then I have one more thing too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you go now because I'll forget if you don't.
Well, that's why I'm doing that because I, uh, last meeting, the board asked me about the trees over on Manchester Drive and I did speak with legal about that and they said, since we know about the hazard, we should get rid of them. And the gentleman, the neighbor, Mr. Holleran, I think his name is, he came in today and I told him I would talk about it tonight.
Yeah, the trailer that I purchased, that's a done deal and it's sitting at the fire station.
Oh, good.
So, I went down and picked that up Friday, Friday afternoon. So, um, the oppa money, correct, that came from that?
Yes.
So, that's another check off my list.
Is that already set up for the command center that you want to be using it for? Or does it need further work to?
Oh, no, it's got lighting in it, but to put the cascade system and the cold water rescue stuff, the, the ribs up the side, I've got pictures, but that the burrows go in and the tie-down things, it's there, so it's, it's.
So, it's ready for it although it's not quite everything that you're.
Right, yeah, yeah, but it won't take much more other than time and making that all work, so.
Speaking of fire equipment, it's been a while since I asked, so I'll do it again. How are we for the expected timeframe for delivery of the new engine?
The new tanker?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it will be, it will be a tanker, but it will, can be used. I haven't talked to Craig, Chris, Chris Champagne, I'm sorry, not Craig, in a while. And I need to because things should be moving along. Because the last time I really talked to him was when the cabin chassis was headed to deep south in Mississippi and they were going to get started on it. So, um, he said two to three months.
So, in theory, some, somewhat soon.
Yeah, and I have talked to Hawtikin chief where our other ambulance is coming from. And that's looking like the end of June, July, they'll be getting their new one in. They're paying $430,000 for their new ambulance and it's just a plain Jane. There's no added, nothing.
What'd you say the number was? How much did you say it was?
The new, not the one we're buying.
Oh, yeah, the one, yeah.
Four hundred and thir, four hundred and twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Wow, that's crazy.
All right, so, um, so that's still all in the works and, and I do need to get a hold of Chris. I just, every time you think of it, the day is gone.
On the roadside, since we can actually see it now, I see you've done a, quite a bit of work at the safety building, preparing for the road, the second driveway, which is mostly roughed in, I think.
Yeah.
And the, starting the path up the hill. Give you a second to talk about that and say what you're expecting and so on and how much you've gotten done. This looks impressive.
Well, we did that, what, was it November?
Yeah, November.
December. You, you were, you were gone, when you were on your.
December then.
Yeah, when you were out, when you were gone and, yeah, that, yeah. Just gotta get that cleaned out and leveled off and, well, it won't be leveled off. There'll be a grade there, but get the three feet of the old material and stuff out of there and then fill that valley in and then up a little bit where that other field is on the right. There's a lowland there. Got to put a pipe that comes across to there into the drain at the firehouse where the culvert goes underneath the propane tanks. Get up top.
Oh, sorry. The wonders of peripheral vision not being very accurate, especially once you're wearing these. All right.
So, yeah, I don't, not really, yeah. We'll wait until it dries out a little bit because it's always easier instead of chasing mud and slop and. The man from the state, when we were there, he did stop and took a look at things and said that it was nice that people did things the way they agreed on and, and things. He was new, he was the new guy that was taking over the gentleman that we dealt with to get the driveway permit. Had moved on to the town of Bedford or something for another job.
Well, good luck to them.
Oh, okay. And, um, so this gentleman was just coming through to go to Osklen to do a driveway, so he saw us there working, so he stopped and, and, um, I think somebody had called, he didn't say, but I think somebody had called to, to have him come. Not, nobody from here, but to make sure it was done the way it was supposed to be. He didn't quite say that, but that's how it made it out to be. But he was, um, couldn't believe that the way it was being done and it was being done right and enough cover over the pipe and, and, um.
All right. Any other comments or questions for?
Not for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
All right, that moves us on to old business, which we have, but is not sort of on the agenda. So, let's see. I guess I'll go back to first, do we have anything further on the copiers?
I have not, as you know, I was out all last week, so I have.
And covered the trees, so do you want to talk briefly about that and how we should manage that and where the funding and so on?
Well, I guess, I don't, I don't know exactly what we're looking for for funding. First of all, so that's the first thing I would need to know. Need to know how many trees. We'd need to get a quote. I think we would need to bring it back to you and then talk about where, where the money.
And what exactly we're gonna do? We're just gonna put them down? We don't need to necessarily clean them up?
I, I would say.
You know what I mean? I mean, granted, wouldn't we like it cleaned up? But just like the, the power line people do a lot of times, they just leave the stuff.
I would think we would just make it so it's not a danger.
Yeah.
Yeah, just lay it down.
How does that work when, when, golly, you could go down a town road and see danger everywhere?
You always have danger.
Right.
I mean, so that's.
But the legal thought that that we were.
Well, and it, I'm not surprised at that.
No, is this like over his house or something or?
It's leaning toward this gentleman's house. If you have something like that that you don't know about, if you have an incident, then you're not liable.
Just knowingly and willingly allowing it, yeah.
But because you do know, it's like if there was a hole in the road and you never fixed it and someone did something to their car, you'd be responsible. Whereas if you don't know.
Got a few of them. Huh, interesting.
And again, um, let's hope something doesn't happen, but I would think what you'd want to do is just have it cut down.
The bare minimum.
Maybe not shaped into a park bench or something.
All right.
So, who goes, who gets that? Is that something Emmett will do, get a quote?
Usually I would ask him. I mean, I can certainly do it, but.
Well, Dan's going out there with a chainsaw.
I could talk with, I could talk to Emmett and see what he suggests.
I'll just get a couple.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what he, what, uh, what he thinks needs to happen and go from there, I guess.
Thank you.
The next one is the town hall heating discussion. Have we gotten anything further on that?
We have nothing further from last meeting. We're still waiting for something from Huckleberry and we have one other company that came up a week ago Friday and, and looked at the situation. They can do the library very easily, but downstairs is more of a problem. And so, they're talking about a combination, the furnace, the mini splits.
So, everybody's talking combinations of things.
So, we're not, I mean, other than I think probably Huckleberry, we, we've asked them for the same type of quote, but I imagine we'll also get just replacing the furnaces in kind. Although they don't recommend.
But not twin.
Yeah, they don't mention.
Probably still two furnaces, but.
Yeah. Last week, I wasn't here, but the heat was down again. I mean, so it's been, I don't know, three or four times that they've had it.
Well, you almost don't need heat.
And, you know. Well, where I was last week, I didn't need it. It was great. But at any rate, I'm hoping that it will last, we can get to the spring and then maybe we won't feel so.
Yeah, it's good that it happened at the tail end of winter instead of at the beginning of winter.
And it's good that it's a warm out, so.
Yes, it is nice. It's warm out.
So, regardless of what we end up getting for quotes and a particular solution that we choose, we need to figure out where and how funding would happen because something will have to be done, whether it's a similar replacement with fixing the way that theirs owned a twin or whether it's a more green-friendly method that will save us money later but cost us more now. And so, however that looks. We need to figure out where we would get funds from, and most likely where we would have to amend one of our requests for a fund to get additional money to cover it at town meeting. Because we don't have the funds to cover even really a lot, a spitball in like kind replacement. We have funds for lots of different things, but not for that. Do you have a sense of what, obviously, we can take little bits and pieces from different places, I know there's a couple thousand dollars left in ARPA that we can certainly use, but that's not much in the scheme, grand scheme of a forty to fifty thousand dollar heating uh, system. So where? At, what different funds and where would you suggest that we look?
Well, that is an excellent question, of which I don't really have an answer. Um, obviously, in, in my view, we'd have to curtail some projects we'd planned. I mean, so that's the first, the first issue that wouldn't able to be done. We do have a couple different trust funds that would be eligible to be used. I think something in the vicinity, we have um, maybe forty two or three thousand in those, we do have three thousand left in ARPA, so we're up to what, forty seven. And maybe we can find some wiggle from in the um, operating budget. Uh, as well. But again, until we know what the, what dollar amount we're talking about.
So probably we should look to amend an extra ten, fifteen, twenty onto one of the funds and then not do something in order to make sure that we have enough to cover whatever would end up being chosen. And, and bid at cheapest.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think how you amend that, cause you wouldn't be able to change the warrant article now.
No, on the town meeting floor.
So in other words, under all other business, yeah, or?
Well, no, no.
In the operating budget, you mean?
When it, uh, cause we've had to do this once before. That might have been in the budget, not in the.
Would have been.
Warrant itself, but you can amend on the floor. And so we presented an amendment that was seconded and then had to be approved.
But let's hope by the end of this week that we have figures, so that we know what we're talking about. And then, of course, you would need to decide which method that you thought was the best method.
Good question, Dave.
And, and we have.
We're gonna get the money.
Uh, municipal property maintenance and then town hall maintenance slash upgrades are the two different funds, are there others?
We have the town hall, we have the reserve fund, yeah.
Are there any others that would apply to this, or?
Those were the only two for trust funds that I could really.
So we should probably use the uh, town hall specific one. As much as we can for that, here's the other one as kind of our catchall for all of the, the different properties. So when we have figures, that's probably the way to try, look at doing an amendment. Okay. I think that's all the old business I had. Did we have any further?
You would ask last time for this master recommendation list, do you wanna bring that up now or some other time?
Um, we can bring it up, I would consider more new business, cause it's doing it again from a couple of years ago. I believe you both got a copy of this that's either in the, not in the original uh, packet, but that has been added to the printed packets this evening. But this is something that we saw a couple of years ago, uh, we can go look at it again after. Before we do that, though, the simple part which we mentioned uh, last time is the new business of the town meeting warrant article presentations. That is sitting actually on our agenda, so we should go through that. Uh, so obviously, one, two, and three are on the ballot itself. And then, this, this is also in the packet, so you can do it either way, but you need to find the pink stuff. Four is the general budget. Which I typically done, I'm happy to do that again, uh, with my overviews as I've normally done. Five and six are the two different funds, uh, and typically, we've uh, kind of all split those up. But I'm just going to say, last time you both said that you were going to look at these and say which ones you were interested in talking about.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know if I was interested in any of them.
So.
We could fight over.
Right.
Well, we know which one you're doing.
What was that?
You're gonna do the damn one.
Oh, yes, I know.
Yes.
Okay, so, so let's start, I had to find my. So you're doing which one?
I'll do four, which is the general budget. And then five and six follow, which are the two funds.
So, so you're, you're, this is the.
Yeah.
That's your name, right?
Sometimes.
I know, right? That is a good answer. Okay, and then six?
So five and six, which do you wanna do there?
Well, no, no, five and six are the two different funds. And so, I'll kinda cover the overall generalities of them while I'm discussing four. But somebody should probably do five and six.
But if you're doing.
Typically, it's been one of each of you, four, five, and six. So that everybody's involved in, in describing and explaining that.
Dee, I'll do six.
You'll do six, okay.
Okay, so five is the one that will have town hall improvements in it, so you may be the one to bring the amendment up when we get there.
Okay.
If needed. Uh, seven is the police cruiser, so that will of course be the chief. Eight is the contingency fund, that's usually Dana. Nine is our damn warrant article, as Mike loves to say.
Dee.
Which is usually Dee.
Would you say seven was, I'm sorry, I was, I was writing here.
Chief.
Uh, seven is the police cruiser, so that would be the police chief. Did you get eight and nine?
Yes, I got you, Dana at eight, me at nine.
So ten is the uh, optional veterans credit, I don't know if that makes the most sense to have Dana talk about?
I can.
Since you kind of brought it to us.
Yeah, let Dana do that, good for him, keep him awake.
Eleven is the discontinuation, so eleven, twelve, and thirteen are discontinuations of uh, various funds. I don't know if we each wanna take one, or how we want to handle that.
You wanna just do all three? Just cause you really, I, you seem to wrap your arms around this whole discontinuation.
Why don't I do eleven, uh, which will be the first one? And then twelve and thirteen will basically be the same following, but a different fund, and each one of you can take one.
Alright, Dee, you wanna do any money on the MO?
I don't care.
Touchdown.
Whatever, whichever one you want. Which one do you want?
Uh, I'll.
Thirteen is my lucky number, so.
Okay.
Okay. Fourteen then is the historic society request, so they'll talk about it, they're petition. And everything after that point is petition. So, each of the petitioners will be able to talk about it.
Do they know that?
That covers that, I assume maybe.
I hope so.
And we requested that the, the previous, that's always been tradition, so I assume that would.
Who's the one to speak?
Hmm? Oh, the petitioners.
Okay.
Uh, is the historic society, the transfer station, and the property are all petition warrant articles.
That's right, okay.
So all of those would come from the petitioners at town meeting. And this was covering pages twelve to fifty, through fifteen in the town report that has just come out. Alright. Uh, so that covers that. And?
On this master plan.
Yes.
Recommendation ballot list. Where, which has been come up, but from.
These are from the master plan.
Right, which is the planning board, correct?
Um, so, the planning board's involved, yeah.
The planning board, it's a planning board.
It's mostly a planning board thing, yeah.
And they work with all the other boards and the people that found it, generated.
And then, what you want? What do you?
So, so this is mainly looking through.
I mean, I didn't know, when, when do we talk about this besides, do we, we don't talk about this at all at town meeting?
So this isn't, this isn't a town meeting per se.
Right, it's okay.
It's a, whenever we're looking at things that we're doing, or things that we should be trying to do.
Ten years, yeah.
The master plan is generally where you wanna look at for direction.
Right.
And so, it's a, every year, every couple of years, we should go through it and see where do we stand, what still needs to be done? What has been done, what should we look at, or has been said by the town, no, we don't actually want that. And so, this is a list of, of, of varying degree of things. I won't go through the entire list, cause we've got eight pages here, and we do want to actually go home today instead of tomorrow.
Right, so I was just, that's why I was kinda asking again, I didn't know if this is something that we should, you know, get town meeting behind us? And then kinda hit a little bit of this each, each meeting, and not all at, all at once, I, I mean, I'm not trying to put it off.
Well, not all of it's select or stuffy.
Yeah, so this is kind of like everything, and.
Some of it's like the historical society, some of it's the planning board.
And like, if you look at.
Can you master plan?
No, I, I understand what, I do understand, you're asking that's what we're talking about?
Oh, I'm fully aware of it.
Yeah, no, no, I, I was just saying.
This is a summary document from a couple of years ago of.
I mean, I understand.
This is in the ten year plan, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So your job is to implement that?
Yeah, so these are like projects from within that, and for example, if you look at page four, um, when we looked at it last time, like al- almost every single thing on here is conservation commission, it has basically nothing to do with us. Most of page five is that way too.
At the end, it's a lot of planning board stuff.
And then, there's a lot of planning board, cause it's like, do this for zoning or transportation or et cetera. There's a couple that I wanted to bring up, just so that we have them in mind, because they're things that either we have done, have looked at already, uh, as a town, or that we should start thinking about other ways that we can work on that or look at it. Uh, oh, and there's plenty in here for historic society in the library as well.
How far into the ten year plan are you?
Uh, I believe it was twenty eighteen.
Yeah, so we're almost done this cycle. So, we're almost done this cycle, so I'd say about, probably start working on it next year or the year after for the next one. So it's twenty twenty eight would be the next one.
Yeah, twenty twenty eight. So we've got about, we're roughly halfway through it.
So the pressure is on you to continue to implement the plan for what they saw that.
Basically.
What our town and community wanted.
Well, they're more recommendations.
To move towards, to move towards those recommendations as we see an ability to do so.
So recommendations would be.
It's kinda what people felt like they wanted the town to go in.
Which may be different now after the pandemic.
Correct me if I'm wrong, am I hearing like conservation is a predominant one here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so tell you lots of these were, so for example, and I'll just bring up several of these things are like slopes and erosion control, shoreland buffers, uh, wildlife, wetlands. And of course, all of that is conservation commission, many of these things.
And is that superseded by federal anyway? The majority of the things that you just stated, are they in fact superseded by federal anyway?
Or state?
Not superseded.
Federal.
There, there are basic protections by both federal and state.
I think federal is superseded.
And these are, and these are, it's not superseding, they are there. And this is suggesting that the town would go above and beyond that, for, which for example, they attempted to do with the wetlands ordinance, which was removed down. So, that's an example of one of those things that actually is a couple pages worth of this summary document that we have. The ones that I wanna look at, um, some of these we've done really well with. For example, improve communications with the police department and to monitor and evaluate their needs with them. I think we've worked really well with all of the departments in the last several years. I know that may not have been the case prior to the master plan having been written, but I think we do a pretty good job of that now. There are a bunch of things here with roads, um, including adopting a road surface management system. We haven't adopted it, but we have gone out and had this, the survey done, they're supposed to a while back, have gotten back to us with results and recommendations from it.
We were supposed to have it two weeks ago.
Has that been received?
Um, but that's from the uh, regional planning commission. And so, we've been working with that, uh, and with them and the road agent on that, uh, when it, if they provide us information. So we're gonna continue to do that to try and make our road maintenance smarter.
Is that federally funded?
Uh, state funded, I believe, through the.
It is, it's, it's funded through a grant program.
So is that quasi-federal state funded?
Could be, I don't know where the state got the funding from.
Thank you.
Yep. And then, uh, so various things within that. Uh, we also have uh, an interesting set which are uh, designating either a committee or to study the need for additional space in town hall. Which I don't know why we would add on to town hall, uh, but also to study the pros and cons of alternative forms of town governments, and other options for making further use of the town hall. Those are in various different places here.
Within the master plan?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
The.
Should be implemented or considered within this ten year master plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, just back to the community, community and facilities, the study of the costs associated relocating, relocating the building for the new salt shed. We have, we, I know we kind of talked about it, but I guess I, cause we feel like, so what is, where are we at with that?
So, that's an interesting one in that, um, it was actually completed and all of the relo- building and relocation was basically figured out. Uh, though using rough costs of some structure, that we don't have a full commitment in engineering on. So that was mostly done. Uh, one of the things that has come up a couple times, and everybody loves to spitball costs, which nobody has any idea of what they will actually be, cause they, is what it's actually gonna be to clean it up. Not just move it, but to, to clean it up. Uh, so that's something we probably need to look at further. And, and again, that's a great place for us to start going in spring after we've gotten through town meeting and so on and so forth.
Cause I, I did have a planning board member ask me, and I guess I couldn't honestly, I thought it was something that was wanted at a town meeting to relocate the salt shed, but it, I don't, I think you told me, no, it wasn't, I haven't seen a vote for that. Um, and what my question would be is what he, what he brought up, and I don't know, do I bring that up, what he brought up?
The, well, so there would have been a vote to appropriate funds to purchase a land to be used for relocating the sand shed.
Yeah.
Um, and that would of course, be that vote of approval to do so. At the time, they did, did not know what that land would be or where, just that they wanted to do it. I won't delve into the process of figuring out and how they got this particular land, since I wasn't on the board. And most of that was non-public negotiations, uh, for obvious reasons of how you negotiate and what you're going to do, what you laid out for, et cetera.
May I have a question, um, will that ever become public?
I don't know the answer.
Will what become public?
I, I.
The negotiations?
The negotiations themselves, probably not, because that would be like what the board at the time was willing to say. So there, there probably are minutes that are something to the effect of, this was a non-public, we, and they discussed what they were willing to offer during negotiations. Obviously, the end result and how much was paid for the property is public information.
Although, the road to get there is in fact not, is that what I'm hearing?
Huh?
The road to get there is in fact not.
Well, the road is being constructed by them.
The negotiations.
Oh.
Along the way.
However much they put in minutes is, is what we would know. Cause a lot of.
Publicly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, well, us too, because it's, it's whatever they decided to put in their minutes. Because if you're saying we'll go up to X amount, but we're gonna offer Y first to a landowner, that obviously can't, couldn't have been public information at the time. And they probably, rather than sealing a bunch of minutes, probably just said, we talked about the amounts that we'll negotiate for. Can't say for certain, because I haven't looked into it in detail, but probably that's the way that it's written.
Thank you.
That would have been previous board and previous administration.
I understand.
So we're mostly there, but there's more things we need to look at to hammer down both the cleanup costs, as well as now that we're actually getting the construction up there, what, what we're gonna look at for a structure and where.
Right, and, and what, what he was, what the planning board member was bringing, well, to everybody's attention is he's, he wasn't sure why, what the need behind moving the salt shed to there, where then, you know, it's higher ground and, um, you know, that's all, you're gonna contaminate another area. Where did somebody, who, was there somewhere along the line where we were told we had to move the salt shed? Something that's.
I don't, I don't know that there was a, you have to. Um, it certainly would be advisable when it's basically on the bank of a river.
Right, but all you're doing is, but see, and I don't know if, know if this is a conversation we should even be having, cause I don't know where.
Oh, absolutely.
Like you pointed out, I don't know, I was under the assumption and probably not knowing all my, all the, how everything exactly happens, but that we were told we had to move it, and then there was some kind of agreement amongst the town to say, yes. Or was this just boards that decided they wanted to move it and?
I, so.
Cause I felt like he made a good point of, you know, you have this, it's been there for, since. I don't know, people would know more than I would, millions of years in a sense. And we, is there any sense of, I see what you're saying, by the river, but it's been there, and is it, is it, would it be better to contain where we already have it instead of contaminating, um, another situation?
Potentially, potentially.
Potentially.
So, so, so.
Potentially.
So there's a couple things.
Me, potentially.
Potentially contaminating another area, potentially.
Right, right.
So, so there's a couple things there. One, being age, and there's a lot of things that would need to be reconstructed or just torn down and replaced. Uh, there's also a sizing issue, and that we have actually added more paved roads, which may need salt. But in addition to that, we've never actually stored our full amount here. It has had to come over in chunks during the winter, we've stored the sand in other places and then had to truck it over. And so it's kind of consolidating everything in one place. And the, of, of course, the whole contamination aspect of salt and runoff and so on. A properly designed building with proper controls for ground shouldn't have the same issues that we have over here where it's just on bare ground. I would like to have a, a more full discussion on that.
Okay, that's fine.
With both the planning board and the Conservation Commission and the road agent all present, so we can.
Yeah, well, right.
Figure out really where we are.
Right.
Uh, but this is more like, yeah, it's a topic, and we should be aware that it's a topic that we need to look at.
Well, and plus we're moving, and we're also moving forward and spending money.
Correct.
To do the, get the, you know, road up back, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think it, we probably should try to get some numbers together, I, I feel.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know, how does that work? Is it, is that just something we say, Emmett, we need a price to, to continue the road up there? Or how, you know what I mean? Because that would be, or is that already in place? And I just, we weren't part of it.
In theory, we, yeah, in theory, we've got what's there covered to get up there.
Is there, because there's money set aside for that, right?
And that same fund has continually been getting funding, we've scaled it back dramatically because we don't have specific numbers for the actual shed portion that would be up there.
Right.
So this coming, this year, we kinda need to look at getting those specific numbers and where it should be sited and why, engineering all of that to make sure that we don't have lots of runoff and, and so on.
And I, I also think we should get, we should have a number worked up to know what the cost. Cause just kind of, just put in that second entrance. I think we should know what the cost is gonna be for the road, and I don't think, instead of just saying, I'm sure if you could put some numbers together.
I know you've given us kind of the, the spitball number when we asked a mile back, but I'm sure he's, I'm sure he'll have a better number now.
Okay, well, maybe we could be. Yeah, let's, let's, let's put that as, so that, you know, when we get asked the question, we know, you know, approximately what we're spending to a certain point, to then, as you keep kind of pointing out, it's gonna be, of course, done in sections, I mean, sections being done throughout years. You know what I mean? But I think we should kinda know what that's gonna cost and, and the, and the, you know, how it's going to be built, and then what will be next.
Yep.
I'd like to have a little bit more budgeted numbers, so that.
I'm, I'm confused, is it the driveway you're talking about?
Yep, so, well, that's what we're starting with, that's what, it's kind of the free range.
Yeah. Basically, the, yeah.
Okay, so the driveway up to the site where you would.
Right. Right, yeah, what is the plan?
Okay.
What, what amount do we, uh, can we afford, if this is where we're moving forward?
You, what do we expect that, that will cost?
Costs to be.
So that we can more project what we need to finish the project.
I will speak with Emmett, see what I can.
So that we can at least answer to questions of, well, what's this gonna cost, what is, how's this working? You know, it, it kinda just brought a little fruition when we did that first, you know, first add-on there,
Well, I think it would be.
because that's, you know, like, that, a certain amount of money went to just making in that second driveway, which we weren't really
Right.
going to do to begin with, but, yeah, so I think we should see, I think we should keep a close eye on that and to find out, so we can account for what is happening.
Yep.
And the cost to do it, and make sure that we're all on the same page. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think so.
I think I got it.
Um, to go back to what I was talking about previous to that, was the various town facilities and so on. It's kind of listed under library, but I think it's, there's a whole host of things that are more.
Town hall oriented.
All town halls, select board, staff, et cetera oriented. Uh, for example, hosting different events that have interest to the community, uh, the library has been doing that with bringing in various speakers, uh, of course, the Free Friday Films, um, and, and similar. But there's also things like investigating options for a meeting room for more people to use, um, possible coffee hours, different ways to promote volunteerism. Having active and updated, like, they say specifically a Facebook page, but in today's social media platforms, it's mainly only older folks like us that kind of sort of use Facebook anymore. So, like, those are all things that.
You call us old?
Kind of sort of older.
Yeah.
There we go. Um, so there's a lot of those sorts of things where we should look further.
And this would be, this would be for us to, so.
Like, this is specifically set aside for the library should work on it, but, but we should talk with the library,
Okay.
because a lot of those are not just like, hey, one library person, do all of this.
May I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
I would like you to consider not necessarily putting the whole emphasis on the library.
Can you speak a little louder please?
Absolutely.
Cause I can't hear you.
I'd like you to consider not putting a whole emphasis on the library.
I'm just saying that the, the items that I just brought up.
When we're speaking about the town hall and the opportunity for community members to engage in community events, I don't feel as if that should be library oriented.
Right.
Then they should take the forefront in a community meeting place.
So that's, that's what, specifically why I just said that, you know, a lot of this is listed under library stuff, but that's more holistic of the way we're trying to do it, so yes.
Let me just support as to why I mentioned that. Unfortunately, I have no idea, and have never been informed, although I have inquired. But I have never, as well as my family, in the last twenty years, been able to obtain a library card in this town.
Why?
So subsequently, I have been paying for the service, and yet, I do not have the privilege.
You walk into the library and ask them to make this time for you. So I can answer that for you.
So in saying that, that's never been explained, I alternatively go to other libraries for the knowledge and the education for my family.
So you can just walk into the library during any open access hours?
I have done that. I have done that, and the answer is, the question has never been answered. I said, may I have a library card? No, you can't. I said, really? Why? Cannot answer it.
Really? That's really strange.
So for the record, I would not like the library to take a lead on our community building and the events happening there. Maybe the other question that the selectmen can bring to the library or the trustees. Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have the privilege of the services that I'm paying for, with no answers as to why.
That is really strange.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
It was strange to me too.
And how long ago did this happen?
Twenty years.
Okay, so why?
Yeah. I have continued to reiterate and continue to go in and inquire.
And they tell you they don't know what to do.
And it cannot be answered. I guess my question at that point in time is, who's our librarian for how long?
Why they're giving you that answer?
All I want, I, I'm just feeling like equal is equal. So in saying that, I just don't want the library to take the forefront for the whole opportunity of this building.
So, so. So, so I, I wanna ask the, the board here if this is okay, because of the information just provided to us.
Right.
Would it be fine with the board if we had Dana ask the trustees in, in email or letter or whatever to explain what the problem is, and if they can't, to us, to, at least, do so to her?
Recipify it? Bring in the information?
Do you have an overdue book? I wouldn't help it.
Excuse me, excuse me, if in fact that's the case, absolutely, I am more than happy, more than happy to be accountable
It's just weird that you can't get one, so.
for me or my family behavior.
They want to know why somebody can't get one.
Absolutely, I am more than happy to be accountable for that, but to be denied that service.
Yeah, that's especially a resonant question. Well, right, no, we're gonna.
After inquiry, over numerous times, is perplexing.
Yeah, that's weird. We'll see if we can get to the bottom of it.
Are you asking me to do that?
Thank you. Appreciate that, for the record.
It's on you, Dana.
I will do it.
I just have a quickie question about the, the library. The, what you have in, um, for the, the library line, I think it's like fifty-two thousand, something like, like that, is that the whole of the library, or is that just the librarian?
That's the whole of the library. Is that the, is it only shown as one line in here, probably?
Maybe it is, yeah. Cause from outside of the fence, it's only one line.
Yeah, from us, it's just one line to give to them. They have presented the, the whole amount at the meetings. You could probably print out that page and, and give it to us, as you can see it.
I have the.
Is that page thirty-two?
I, I don't know.
Um, I don't know.
Cause I, I don't have the one in front of me right now with all of those, but there's probably ten to fifteen different items that break down into that, from librarian to, uh, of course, costs for the library and office supplies.
Office supplies and books.
They maintain their own internet connection. There's also, um, the various different programs that they're part of.
Right.
That are available to people.
Your, your typical library.
So all of those are different line items.
Subscription.
Same project, yes.
Yeah, cause I mean, this, uh, this is, this goes back to twenty seventeen or something, and this is, this is salaries. And I mean, and back then, the salary, and like I'm saying, this is almost six years ago, the, the salary was twenty, twenty-seven thousand three hundred. So I didn't think it would, that just the salary would jump up to fifty, cause it's like eighteen hours of, of, of work.
Oh, no, 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 there's a lot more in there.
But I, it's still, there's a bee in my bonnet about the, uh, the library and the meeting house having a, a joint computer in there, because the meeting house, we've, we were on the board of the meeting house, and we don't have access to it when we wanna use it as a meeting house computer, because it's in the library, and the library has very small hours. But, but that's something to do with, the meeting house has nothing to do with you guys.
And yet, it's convoluted. It would, in, the only way you can access any sort of historic material held by the individual Society of the Preserv- Preservation for the Webster Meeting House
Okay.
is convoluted with the Webster Library. Whereas, the only access internet being as the, is it considered DBA, Historical Society?
So, so I maybe.
Chooses, chooses, as an independent entity, nonprofit, not to place internet in their facility, uh, which would be the high mark, because that's a domicile of doing business, correct?
Uh, I don't.
They've chosen not to, and they're down here.
No, of, of the business, that's the office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Why are we piggybacking an independent nonprofit?
So to, I'll tell you what I think is happening.
Okay.
This is just what I think is happening.
I understand.
I know that almost all, at least almost all and probably all of their documentation, uh, with the exception of private business portions, are available on their website or a link from their website.
Okay, wait, 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 stop, 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 stop.
Yep, I'm gonna finish.
That is not their website.
I'm preparing to finish, I will finish.
That is not their website, that is individually owned by one person, that is not society owned. Clarification.
Sure. And so the documentation is there, is online, and anyone can access it. What the, they have worked out with the library, is that the library will maintain a computer that will have some physical, I shouldn't say physical, but some digital copies of those on it, so that it doesn't have to always go out to the internet, uh, but that would always be able to access that internet site with that information on it. I believe that is the agreement. Please ask the Historic Society when they stand up for their, uh, warrant article, cause they should be able to provide that information to you much more clearly than I can guess at.
Yeah, cause, cause my question.
I want you to be fully well aware of what you just said.
That we do not maintain and control an outside entity, yes.
No.
Though, although that may have been part of what you said, you are okay with an individual owning the IP address for a nonprofit, an individual owning an IP address that is being presented.
That is, I'm gonna cut. Kim, 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 this is an issue for this Historic Society, this has nothing to do with the town, they are not.
It has a whole lot of.
They are not the town. They are not the town, they are not a town entity.
They're running it through your library.
They are not the town, they are not a town entity. The agreement with the library is what they have made, which I believe is just to have access to a computer. If, please ask them further at town meeting if you want further information on that or ask the library when you go in and ask about the card next.
Can't. Can't.
You can absolutely walk into our library, even without a card.
Cause really, really quick, uh, I, I know you haven't gotten there yet, but number fourteen was, was the meeting house wanted, you know, to raise ten thousand dollars for them.
Another thing.
That's why I suggested she ask.
Yeah, and I hadn't seen before, it says for operational costs of the Webster Historical Society and. That would be part of the operational costs.
Yes.
That, the computer in there. And the, the operational, well, I'm, I'll have to talk about that at town meeting because they had their own huge accounts. That were to cover the operational costs forever.
Yes, they do their, they do their own things and they present it each time. So I will completely let them talk about it.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's. Yep, thank you.
Some things that we have definitely covered, uh, like the sand shed, uh, have been things like the transfer station. Developing contingency plans, working with them to manage strategies and the refuse disposal committee, which doesn't exist anymore. Um, and so that's why we now have the new agreement that is going to be put forth to everybody, which hopefully gets adopted. Cause otherwise, there's gonna be all kinds of problems. The. Let's see. There's a whole bunch of things in here that are like work with Pillsbury Lake, uh, on various things. Uh, for increasing and making them better protected from breakage during hazard mitigation issues and so on and so forth. Many of these, we have actually tried to work with them, uh, whether it was, uh, the paving of a couple different roads. Working with them to clear out things before they could run their own lines and upgrades. Um, and so we've actually done that most recently with concrete. And we have offered to continue doing that with them as they replace like a road worth of lime. Though they have indicated that they're not ready to do that in any near term. There are various things for again roads, like the surface management was brought up again. Uh, but overall for transportation, uh, includes things like reviews of crash locations with the chiefs. And we've talked about this a couple times, uh, of, for specific couple sets of intersections. But we've never really done it as a, where were all of the crashes that happened in town over the past few years? So maybe that's worth, maybe that's worth a future discussion. But, uh, generally it's been, hey, there's a problem here. We should try to take care of it and we usually have those discussions then.
The majority of the crashes are not intersectional, they're in, in Webster.
Well, I was gonna say, cause we.
With the exception of maybe the one at the top of the hill by the historic building.
We've had a couple of them.
It's good to know. Can you get me that stuff later? Cause I'm trying to put something in for funding through the central financial planning commission for that quarter. So if I get reports on that, that'll make the, the weight a little heavier.
Yep, and, and then there's a lot of things for planning board, you know, consider innovative land use and other planning and zoning, et cetera. But I, I wanted to bring this up so that we had in our minds that these are different sections that we definitely need to. Keep in mind as we look forward and move forward. We've been doing a lot of these things. We've been looking at a lot of these things. Things like town records of importance and preservation. We've been working on the digital preservation, uh, for that. We had the, um. The Record Preservation Committee reconvened, though I don't know that they've met recently.
No, we gotta meet, that's.
But, um, so we've done a lot of those things and we've tried to work more closely together with all the different boards. So I wanted to bring that up, go through it briefly and, um. Please, if there's something on here that you're interested in, for example, more about the sand shed detail. Let's work to make sure that we get that on a future agenda following town meeting.
Okay. May I ask a good question?
What was that?
Yes.
Um, recognizing that, it's my understanding that being reconvened in regards to records preservation and all. What would be the purpose of eliminating the Historical Committee in the municipal level? I understand that's been proposed.
Not the committee?
No, that has not been proposed.
Historical Commission.
No. So there, there, there's the Historic Society and then.
Separate entity.
Supposedly there was a Historic Committee that existed a while back.
For a good many years, historical.
And we, we don't have further information.
Oh my goodness, what a legendary, legendary committee.
Don't have. We don't have further information sitting on that right now. Uh, and we did remove the warrant article to remove the funds for that because it did have a specific and. Very purposeful reason for existing. And so that is not one of the ones that will be showing up on the actual warrant articles.
Excellent.
So will that in fact be eliminated? Is that the intention here?
With the committee?
Yes.
There is no committee at this time because one has ceased to exist.
Is that primarily just a fact of reinstating membership and appointed members?
I will refer to Dana to be able to look up the documentation and let you know.
Thank you very much.
I have not read into all of the warrant articles and or minutes to decide when and how that happened.
Thank you. I think it's imperative, imperative that that committee sustains independently of the historical. What someone calls society here. Thank you very much, Dana. Is there a time that I could catch up with you on that?
Sure. When I'm done, I'll gladly get to you.
Thank you. Will that be prior to town meeting?
I don't know, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll let you know when I'm done.
I appreciate that.
It should be, but.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other business that, uh, besides moving forward, any agenda from the, all right. So that moves us to correspondence.
Um, I'd like to point out in your thing, we got a, the bill from Empty Trash. And I was very interested to read their little, um.
Yes.
Their, um.
Update.
Newsletter, I guess, for lack of a better way, because I didn't know that, um. That there had been a change in the tipping fee.
Oh my, everyone knows that.
So. So there hasn't and there can't be because we haven't held public hearings to agree to it at the same rate.
That's why I'm asking this question, yeah.
What.
And maybe I'm not reading it right.
And I think it's, I think it's really interesting, uh, the way they phrase it. And I would like you to talk to Neil to verify this, but what I think happened was that their select board. Took further comments on the fee schedule, which no one had finalized. Being that we had talked with them and said, hey, talk to the transfer station about these. And then at a point that you've got better numbers, come back and we'll talk about it again.
And I didn't know.
And so I'm guessing that that's what they were doing, um, but please find out for Neil.
Okay. Okay, exactly. Go ahead and tell me.
Who is their town eventually?
Well, how, well, and even as you're getting asked it, I, I agree because we were at them and there was discussion about the different fees, but.
Right.
We never, we, well, we never had a say on what.
It wasn't really.
No, well, it was, it was. I don't know if they even phrased it as a public hearing. But the, the interesting part there is that. While the fee schedules fall into ordinance, which falls to select board public hearings. A lot of the process and the way it's done and what the, what makes those fees make sense are. After the new amendment has been adopted by both towns. So they very likely would have to be different numbers that would probably, probably be higher because of different weird processes. If the amendments don't pass. But there's no real actual figure on that. I've got a feeling that more people involved would be more time and longer hours for more people. So, yeah.
The next thing I have is a blanket destruction authorization from BRB. That's a company for the retention. They have assessing records, subdivision, building permits, meeting minutes, ZDA files, roads and bridges and planning board. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and what they're asking is, do we want them to destroy these now that they have filmed them? The state law does permit us to keep it digitally. Or would you like us to ask for them to bring them back?
My, my first question there is what does our record retention policy say? And are all of these documents covered under that in one form or another?
Okay, we'll have to find that out since I'm not just sure of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure of policy. They're covered under the law. They're all in PDFAs. They're covered in the RSA is what they're saying.
That gets me started, thank you.
So we should just know that that's an appropriate thing and, and if it's the appropriate way to do it, then. Okay, that would probably make sense since we have copies of them.
And we do have backups of them too.
At what point in time do they start charging us for storage? I know with the previous company, it was take your time.
They were saying charge for storage because it's stored on our server.
No, 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 um, the physical copies.
I asked that question. They haven't gotten back to me yet.
Good, they don't charge us now.
Hey, ladies, listen, it's not like a price tag on a piece of clothing. It's not there. I just call that free, but they tell me I'm wrong. Right?
So the previous company had said we could just leave them there and take, take our time to verify things.
That's why I asked, cause I said during the time where you're making the decision, if they were gonna start charging us stuff, me and Dana were gonna go pick them up. So they're not, so.
Right, perfect. All right.
That's all I had for correspondence.
Is there any other correspondence that we've received? Okay. Uh, that would then move us to public comment. Yes?
Really quick question. I was reading the minutes from, um, I think it was the February, um, meeting when Sarah Kimball came in to ask about. Using the, um, the town hall for, you know, different, different things. And, um, she was asking about a better sign for outside and that you said that the, the electronic sign was gonna come and be put in front of the, um. The safety building. So are we're, we're still getting that? Cause the last I had heard, it was too expensive to run the electricity.
We actually have the sign.
Okay.
It just has not been installed yet because of, you know, winter and frost and mud and so on.
Right. No, cause as I say, I hadn't been to, there was a bunch of meetings I didn't come to. But the last I heard was that, you know, they hadn't figured in how much it was gonna cost to run the sign and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, there were, there were questions about which way to install the electricity getting to the sign. But we have the sign that's ready to go in. It'll be installed as soon as it can be.
Now, another question, it's always been, um, thrown at my side about our town hall sign out here. It's just this little teeny weeny thing like this that says, has an arrow to downstairs. But people driving by don't know that this is a town hall if they're not from Webster, Kentucky, Salisbury. Isn't there any way we can get a bigger sign that says Webster Town Hall out there? I know the prison makes nice signs. They do, they do. And we do have another sign downstairs, a welcome to Webster sign. That's been down there for a long, long time.
Do you wanna?
Potentially.
What's his name that made, um.
Yeah, we can get caught if we're to suggest it.
Yeah. Tara, do you wanna take that and design what you think would be good?
We tell you downstairs.
Oh, well, that one's.
It's such a pride.
The one downstairs says welcome to Webster, but it didn't get put up yet cause it was gonna go on a state road and they had to check with the state.
Okay.
But, um, Brenda found it the other day. It's, it's kind of, I think it's in the old selectman office down, you know, meeting room.
Downstairs, yeah?
Behind one of the bookcases. And that's a nice big welcome to Webster sign. But I mean, I can check with the prison and see what a sign.
Well, I mean, if we already have a sign, I mean.
Well, that one just, that just says welcome, welcome to Webster.
Yeah, welcome to Webster is different.
I suppose, I suppose. I suppose, yeah, right.
Yeah, you, you just need a simple one. You know, Webster Town Hall, established thirteen-ten.
Yeah, yeah, it's a long time ago. Anyway. Tara, look into that and look into what, you know, have them draw something up and then.
Okay.
You'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, it would just be a, a nice.
We got, we got, none of us up here have got anything against a nice sign out there.
Yeah, it's just people, new people in town don't know where to go. We keep saying it's across the street from the school. But they all, you know, they start coming up the steps and so, yeah, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Are you still in public comment?
Sure.
I'm done.
I was about to move forward, but yes.
But we're still in public comment?
Yep.
Yes.
I just need more clarification on this. Just, just need clarification on this. In regards to our auditing service that we contract out for.
Okay.
So.
I'll defer to Dana who talks with them all the time.
Yes, absolutely. We discuss this numerous times.
Yeah, Kim and I are old friends on this.
New, numerous times. Although it's very, very much so displayed in our.
Yes, we do print that report in, in the town report.
Yes, we do. And we have for a good many years.
Yes.
Through the same exact entity. And they're very, very forthcoming. In fact that they're not really auditing our books for any debt. And they're fully well aware, as they state, that it's not in compliance. With any government accepted practices. And verbatim, they state here. In their presented report that. They understand that they look at our books, but it's not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness. Of the town of Webster's internal control. And they say they're performing an audit, an audit in accordance to standards. But I guess what I would like to have defined is what is a reasonable user? Based on the financial statements that we're being presented publicly.
What is a reas- I didn't, reasonable what?
User.
A reasonable user?
Is that what you said?
Correct. And let me just tell you, a reasonable user, and these are their printed words. Submitted by our auditor that looks at our books.
Yep.
Which there has been some contention over the last couple of years on different issues and subjects. But it says there is not an absolute assurance and it is not a guarantee that the audit conducted in accordance. Will always detect a material misstatement when it exists. Now, in saying that, when I bring up reasonable user, it says, misstatements are considered material. If there is a substantial likelihood that individually or in aggregate. They would influence the judgment made by a reasonable user based on financial statements.
I think it might be a good thing to have the auditors come.
I think that would be. Can we do that prior to town meeting?
Because, I mean, I'm not an auditor. And I will say, if you looked at any town's audit, you're gonna have the same terminology in it.
I think it would be a challenge to, to have a meeting ahead of town.
Not every town has the substantial situations that Webster has in fact. Unfortunately or fortunately. Been impacted by over the last recent years.
Can, can you find out when or if they could come?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be good. Cause then we can ask them directly.
Thank you. Is there any, is there any way that we can get that date publicly presented at town meeting?
If, if we know, absolutely.
As soon as I know, I'll publish it.
Thank you. I think that would be in the benefit of a lot of townspeople.
All right.
Cause otherwise, what's the sense in having a. Cause otherwise, what's the sense in having an audit?
Well, I I do think it comes down to just like, you know, when you're on a business side of things, you have certain different audits and it's certain different money. You know, like if you're a bad.
Money should not matter because ethics, morality and honesty and truth are priceless.
True, but what's customary. Well, it's kind of like insurance.
Sustainability.
But it's kind of, it could, I would compare, I don't, I probably shouldn't even try to.
No, don't compare. Don't compare. Don't compare truth and honesty to any value.
Never mind. I can't fucking put that.
All right. So if there are any further public comments. Seeing none, I'll move on to select board motions and approvals. Uh, we do have our draft meeting minutes, both a public and a non-public. Are you able to both look through that? Are there any amendments that you would like to make?
I did not see anything.
All right. I did not see anything specific either, so I would move that we accept the meeting minutes for February twentieth from both the public and non-public sessions as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for signing and motions. Do we have any motions for candidates?
I I don't have, I do have things for you to sign.
Okay.
And you recall when you did this, speaking of audits, this questionnaire for the audit and Dave was gonna sign it and he very dutifully came in and I couldn't put my hands on it. It has, it has, it has appeared.
Okay.
Imagine now, you're the only one that has to sign it.
I assume.
Oh, this is, this is to sign the questionnaire that I answered.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You had done that as a as a board and then I filled in it in. Promptly put it somewhere else.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is not signing off on an audit. This is signing off on the answers that the board answered from the questionnaire uh, previous time, which is three or four pages or so. And that, yes, we did answer them that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the payroll. Very nice through pay us.
Oh, sign this, protect your.
Well, you gotta sign it too, so I might as well get mine while we're waiting.
Probably came in fine.
Remember to use the invisible ink. There you go.
Look at that, a baby.
It pretends it's a baby.
Marlo, are you running again?
Yes.
Uh, I believe everybody except for, I think all positions except for two are incumbents. Uh, one of which is not, has nobody on the ballot, which is for moderator. Uh, and the other one is, I believe, a trustee of trust funds that is a different person
Yes.
than was previously there, but there are no contests. Everybody is individually running except for nobody for moderator.
So I was gonna say, where are all your signs?
What was that?
There's no competition.
Where are all her signs?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Constitutionally, how will you even run a town meeting? Oh, without a.
Oh, you mean without a moderator. Well, he'll be here for this town meeting.
It, so he will be here for this town meeting?
Yeah.
It's after that that we would not have the moderator position.
Correct.
Uh, the, if there is not a dutifully elected moderator, uh, then the select board may appoint one.
Appoint?
Yes.
Ooh. Is that constitutionally correct?
That is from the RSAs.
I don't care about RSAs. Not that I don't care about them.
Well, that is the New Hampshire constitution puts those RSAs into practice, so.
I have the manifest. You asked me about the school last time and I'll arrange for that, so that will resolve itself.
Which way is that?
They're going to give us complete credit.
Okay, perfect.
There is a, we now have issued three checks to property owners. And I know you don't have yours yet, but soon.
Oh, am I supposed to have one check?
Yeah.
Oh, for the.
For the, for the easement. Yeah. I don't know of any others that's too exciting on there.
Eastern minerals is salt?
It is salt. And I'm sorry, Marlo, forgot to bring the bills. I will speak to myself severely. Oh, won't be nice.
Emergency Services Marketing Corporation for a three-year renewal. What's that?
Well, let me go downstairs and get the bills.
You're welcome.
Why is he going in there for you? He just looks at me so well.
Do we need to market for emergency services?
Well, that's what, that's what we're asking.
Fire stuff, election hours, oil. I'm gonna guess this is Police Jordan Equipment Company?
Why would you think it's police?
Cause most equipment usually is.
Oh, no, no, you can put it town. Yeah, Jordan Equipment's got like late, you know.
That would be Emmett Bill.
Maybe it was.
Huh?
Probably.
Yeah, right. But I was just explaining what Jordan Equipment sells, which is cutting edges.
Oh, okay.
Things that he probably needs, cutting edges.
Things like that, creator.
Yep, generator servicing.
Where's our generator?
Uh, right behind the building.
Who works on that, just out of curiosity?
Uh, New Hampshire Generator Installers LLC.
And where are they out of?
I don't happen to know.
We're gonna see it.
I won't.
No, no, but I'll tell you, you know, a lot of people have generators and they'll think, oh, I should service them once a year.
Yeah, and they.
My mother would do that, yeah.
All right, so once we have, once I have that information, the rest looks normal to me. Find anything interesting.
No kidding.
Here we go.
The bills.
Thank you, Dana.
You're very welcome. What did I do?
Went down and got a.
Oh, okay. Well, you're welcome.
Still.
Yeah.
Need to get through a few more.
It should be all better.
Oh, I am responding. This is the emergency management system that the.
Oh, that we have.
That the fire station.
That is, oh, the fire station, not the station, right?
I think it's the fire station.
It's the fire.
But yeah, that's how they manage who's going where within the whole district.
Would that be something like the Amber Alert that we.
With what?
The E D A day?
With what?
The Amber Alert that you're.
Oh, no, the Amber Alerts are different. That's.
So what is the marketing routine too?
It's the name of the company.
Uh huh.
And I am responding, is there a particular product that the fire departments of the whole capital area region use in order to manage who's gonna respond where and like, we've actually got a truck coming, so we don't need somebody else to come from a further town away.
Is that already covered at county through dispatch?
Uh, dispatch is different. Maybe part of it is called, is agreed in there. I believe the county dispatch probably also pays into the service because they run and trigger the board getting called. You could ask Imit for further detail or demonstration.
What is that fee?
Like seven hundred bucks for three years.
For three years?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seven hundred and thirty-five.
And that contract goes?
Uh, it's for for a three-year contract.
You're reinstating it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then I have, Russ has, this is one. You've got two copies of the same thing. Is that what you have?
Two copies of the same thing. One for me, one to Karen.
Perfect.
We need to sign that.
More timber.
I like when we get paid.
I do too. Well, we had a lot of intense cuts this year also. I think this is the most I've seen since I've worked here.
I'm impressed they are able to cut at this point.
Yeah, I am too. It's a ground is.
Hopefully, it's just.
I talked about that with Addy.
We cut it and now it's muddy, so we're now doing paperwork. Yeah, does that finish our signings?
That's the last items I need signed.
Are there further, uh, public session items?
I have nothing further for the public session. I would like a non-public session.
Is there anything further for public session from the board?
Will you be leaving or I'll leave?
Really? Let's see. So we have, I think, I need to fill, sign the second sort of, I think, pages. There's two spots in each one. So I would like to have one under reputation. Uh, and you want one under, I believe, emergency preparedness.
That's what I would.
Are there any others?
I'd like to have one under personnel.
And personnel. So expecting three non-public sessions.
We're preparing.
As per normal, we would, of course, exit all of everything once we are done the non-public sessions. So we come out into public session and then immediately close the session, so there will not be further comment or opportunity to do that. And so I would, uh, emergency first probably, most straightforward.
Would you like to do go first?
No, that's fine.
All right. Yes.
Are you still in public session currently? Thank you. Just wanted to be clear. He's gonna get the whip out.
So I would move that at eight eighteen, we go into non-public session under emergency preparedness.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You'd like to shut off?
If you would like to, Dana, then I will lock the doors.
Oh, geez. You pulling the windows too or what?
The shades.
We have a button for them.